Okay, we are live, we may begin.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty one work session of the Mathacton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wave announcements, the public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of attendance, it looks like we have all board members present this evening, and since we don't have any voting matters, we do not need a roll call. For recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, I turn to Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have a number of guest speakers. We have Dan Sicola from Fadavia this evening to give the Arrowhead construction update. Mr. Sicola?
Hello, good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. I have a copy in front of me.
Yeah, bear with me one second.
While you're doing that, I'll just say, the site is looking really well. The pictures you're gonna see in a minute. One reflects the the topsoil being stripped off the site, which is the picture in the upper right hand corner you'll see in a minute. And then the other picture is the after the topsoil is stripped, which represents the proof rolling of the site, which is basically a piece of equipment with a drum on it. That that flattens out the site. We had talked about that in previous meetings about the need to create a smooth surface off the top of the site so that the water sheds in the in the, you know, desired directions. I don't want to go too far ahead. So those are the two photos in the upper right hand corner. Again, from a big picture standpoint, the site looks really well. Construction fences up completely around the site, which basically insulates the the existing school from the construction site. So it really is two separate, you know, sites at the moment, which is what we want it to be. Again, those two photos, photo on the right is the earlier dated photo. Basically stripping, if you've been to the site, there are several piles of material on the site. There's, in addition to the basins, we mentioned last month that the small little basins, the, in addition, the temporary basins are installed for erosion and sediment control purposes, but the piles that are on the site right now in the in the back left hand corner is is topsoil that's been stripped off to the site, and then there's two large piles in front of that, which looks like aggregate and and concrete, etc., which it is, it is. And and those piles are in the front of the site represent, there are two different types of materials, but they represent the material that's being used to bring up the subbase level to the appropriate level that that the building needs to sit on. So that's, 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 those are the piles that you see on the site now. Just reflecting some of the notes on the side. The 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 pad, and we've talked about this, the pad, so to speak, which is the footprint of the building, has been taken to subgrade, and we're we're in the process. They were scheduled for Thursday, but because of the weather, realistically, it's going to be pushed off to next week where we'll we'll start addressing any any soft spots, unsuitable soils that need to be mitigated, as we've discussed, so that they can start bringing up the rest of the pad to the appropriate grade. And as we mentioned, the the responsibility of bringing the pad up to the appropriate grade is that that's been liquidated and is the contractor's risk and responsibility. So there won't be any, we won't be coming back for any issues regarding that. Moving to the middle of the page, that that's a manhole. Essentially, you've got, if you can envision the building pad, which, you know, where the building's going, then around the building for the most part of the utilities that service the building and connect to the building. So in this case, the storm has already been substantially, excuse me, not the storm, the sanitary sewer, the sewage system that runs around the building has substantially been installed today. The inspector, who the inspectors are always coming out to the project for the township was out taking a look at some of the installation. Again, that's a manhole. And the water line, we had it, we had to, as you know, tie in, we had to put a temporary line to feed the existing building. In addition, the new line that will feed the new building is already stubbed up and brought to the building. And if we could scroll down a little further. Similarly, with utilities, the electric, they, what they did is they they've tied the the temporary electric that's going to feed the the new building temporary is being fed off of the the existing building, just the way it worked out with with Pico and everything. So the um, the two photographs on the side, the one on the left represents a transformer, and then the one on the right is is the the panel that's servicing the construction trailers that are starting to be brought to the site. Again, it's 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 in progress. And that's, that's pretty much it as far as the work before getting to the look ahead. Any questions about the work in progress? The, as far as upcoming work, so the soil, I would say, the way it's listed on this sheet is, it says March through April. I would say the main goal of the the next two months is to get out of the building pad in in its entirety. So we we kind of mitigate whatever risk there is, sort of the working, the the weather and and the change order, so we can keep that cost down as much as possible, and then get into the building pad to its to its finished elevation, and and then we can start doing all of the utility work and the work within that building pad, start footers on the building. Most likely, it'll be a phased progress where we'll, you'll, you won't see like the entire building pad done, but it'll it'll be done in stages, so the work can be stacked on top of itself to 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 do it in an efficient manner as as the work progresses. So they'll, they'll keep working that building pad, bringing it up, and I imagine toward the back of the building, I think that's the way it's phased, the footers will start, start in the back area. Budget wise, there's no change. The one change order that was approved last week is just reflected down below as a potential change order. It needs to be brought up now into the the actual approved change orders. And that's it. In summary, the next milestone we have on the project is the completion date in July. This would be building completion for turnover July of of two thousand and twenty two.
Thank you, Mr. Sicola. Any questions for members of the board? Mr. McGuinness?
Why is the change order status as proposed? That's what we voted on last Thursday night.
Pardon me?
That's what we voted on last Thursday night.
Correct.
Then why is it proposed?
Yeah, as I mentioned, it needs to be brought up. I guess when they submitted this.
Yeah, this was, this was submitted to us in advance of that meeting last week, that where the where the change order was approved. So it just has not been updated since that time.
All right, so it's an approved change order. The slides just don't reflect that.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions, Ms. Reese?
Um, there was a member of the public at the special meeting on Thursday that was talking about pictures of dirt. Um, I don't know if this will suffice for his pictures of dirt, but hopefully, if if it does, then we can maybe let him know that if he asks.
Yeah, I'm not really sure which dirt we're talking about. There's a lot of dirt on the site, so.
Okay, so what I just wanted to make. Okay, good, that's.
For public consumption, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make mention that there are pictures of dirt here.
Yes. Any other questions for Mr. Sicola? Ms. Hall?
I I've learned a lot through property through the years, but there's a term on here that I'm not familiar with. Dan, can you explain what a C can storage unit is?
Yeah, it's, and I, and I want to go over some of the wording on there. It's essentially, if you can imagine, it's it's a shipping container. And and, you know, like, you have, um, you have construction trailers, which will have little windows in them, and there should be people inside them working when they're not on site. The C can are literally those storage containers you see piled up on top, on on top of, you know, ships that carry cargo across the ocean.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Mr. Sicola? Seeing no other questions, thank you, Dan. I appreciate your time this evening. Next on the guest of scheduled speakers is the staff vaccination update. Assistant Superintendent Mr. Cherry Gina will give that presentation. Mr. Gina, just tell me when to advance the slides.
Sounds good. Good evening, everyone. This is just a quick update for everyone, kind of where we are in the vaccination process with our staff and contractors. You, there's been a lot of talk about what the vaccines look like, so just kind of want to go through where we are at this point, and when our projected timeline will be to hopefully complete the vaccination process. January fifteenth was the first time we had the opportunity to communicate with staff about vaccines. These are the Moderna and Pfizer vaccines. They were offered to staff based on position. So the positions, again, the qualification was a was a county qualification that we all followed, and it was based on staff that would be within the proximity of students that there was, they were going to be in constant contact with students. And there was no way to maintain a social distance of six feet and probably not even three feet at that point. So there was a hundred and thirty individuals that were on that list. The round two on January nineteenth, this one is unknown. This is when the expanded list came out, which was based on medical conditions, age, and and some other factors, and we couldn't ask, and we didn't provide tokens for this. So we're not quite sure exactly how many people were vaccinated in this process. If you remember, this is the one where we were sending links out, and it was a first come, first served basis. They were going within twenty or thirty minutes of us getting them, they were gone. So there was a few times where we even got it out to staff, and the links were already completely full by the time we got it out. So this was a, that was a difficult part of the process, but I think we did well in that. A number of our staff members were able to to get the vaccinations during that time. The round three was still the Moderna and Pfizer vaccines. This was an expanded one A category, but was it, it was an effort to get it into the education facilities and to contractors and education first. So it's the same expanded phase one A category. But we were able to provide a token system for our, for our staff members, and that was for any of our individuals in the building, any of our substitutes that run a long term basis, any of our first student drivers, and any of our Aramark contractors that were in the buildings that fell into the phase one A category. And then finally, the last one is the J and J vaccine, where we're able to offer that to all of our staff members and contractors, and that's approximately three hundred individuals. That'll be in that, in that process completely. You can turn, turn the slide then, Dr. Zerby, thanks. The J and J rollout, this is the one that that obviously has caught the most publicity at this point. March third, we sent information out to staff. They completed a staff survey on March fifth. On March, March sixth, they sent the data to us. The the survey was done through PDE and indirectly through the IU. So the PD would send that information to the IU, the IU then sent it to schools. The the beauty of how we handled this in Montgomery County, many of the counties around us, they, for instance, if they gave you nine dates, many of the counties just said, here are the nine dates, first come, first served, send it out to all the schools and and have them figure it out. Fortunately, in Montgomery County, we didn't do that. We decided that each one of the school districts would have an assigned day, so we could work around that to the best of our ability for staffing purposes and to make sure that we weren't making it more complicated for our neighboring districts, and it was easier to plan for. We prioritized the list to the counties based on positions, and our first round J and J vaccine is going to be scheduled on March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty one. For that vaccine date, we have two hundred and forty eight slots. For the two hundred and forty eight slots, there's about fifty two individuals. There's a few that are coming in here and there. So it might be a little bit more than fifty two at this point, but ultimately, we can, all of our employees that are in buildings and our our contractors will be in the second round. So all of our employees in buildings will be able to receive the vaccine by March nineteenth if they want to. The individuals that will be in the second round of vaccines are our employees at Farina, our first student contractors that are not in the phase one A category, and our Aramark contractors that are not in the phase one A category. Now, I'll be honest with you, I've been sending these lists to the IU to try to get these individuals in as soon as possible. So if there's any openings that other schools aren't filling all their appointments, we're trying to get our contractors and Freena employees in as soon as possible. That way, they don't have to wait even later in the month. But from what we're being told, everyone will be receiving a vaccine if they want one, employee or contractor, by the end of March. And that ends the process at this point, and if anyone has any questions, I can fill them.
Mr. Neverett?
Yeah, thanks for this, Jay. This is obviously great news. Do we, I guess, what are the rules? Are we going to be able to know what percentage of our staff has actually been vaccinated? Is that something we can ask or even mandate?
We can't mandate it. We can certainly probably ask any questions that we want, but they wouldn't, staff wouldn't have to respond to them. Now, naturally, through the survey, if individuals responded to the survey, we do have an indication of how many staff members have been vaccinated if they've responded to the survey, and we know how many have to be. But, you know, the biggest variable for us, Ralph, is the that one time when it was the phase one A group that we were part of the process. We just not sure how many people were vaccinated during that time.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, and really, thanks for the quick action on this and the way that this has been communicated out, and then just trying to get this into people's hands as quickly as possible. I I appreciate it, but I'm sure they, our staff appreciates it more. Thanks, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neverett. Other questions? Ms. Cantrell?
My only other comment would be, what about the coaches that are not, you know, Mathacton teachers that are volunteering, and then any kind of like, you know, the after-school providers or any of those things, will they also be allowed to participate?
Great, great question, Jen. Yeah, that, all coaches and activity sponsors that are employed by the district were in the first round. They'll be receiving them on March nineteenth. We did have one coach that put in for it after the survey went out, but it is a fall coach. And and that fall coach, after speaking with them, I'm not concerned about them working with students prior to them having the chance to get the second round vaccines done.
Ms. Purdue?
Do this also include maybe staff that may be out on leave? Are they being included? So you're communicating these schedules to them also?
Yes, Samira, and any of our staff members that are on leave currently are able to get the vaccine, if, of course, if they're able to, based on the leave that they're on. Good question.
Thank you, Ms. Purdue. Any other questions for Mr. Regina? Ms. Reese?
Um, and you may not know the answer to this right now, and we all, but for any teachers, some of their, I would imagine, some of their medical concerns, it doesn't matter whether they're vaccinated or not, but then I would imagine there are some that the vaccination helps, and although you have to wait a few weeks afterwards, does that mean any, and it's okay if you don't know this answer yet, and I don't need numbers, but does it mean that some staff might be able to come back in person or definitely back in the fall? Like, do do we know that yet? I mean, that's, I know that's a scientific type question, but.
Sure, sure. Well, we, we have certainly seen an increase of staff return since they're, they're able to get vaccinated. So those individuals that may have fallen into the phase one A category that have already received both of their Moderna or both of their Pfizer vaccines, and have waited the two week waiting period afterwards, have started to come back. But but you're right, there, there are individuals that fall into the category in which their underlying medical conditions may prevent them from receiving a vaccine. So we would still just work with those individuals as we normally would with any of the leaves that that we would have.
And with that, Ms. Reese, I know Dr. Sorgeni is going to be preparing a, an update to some of the staffing numbers that we had earlier in the year, so that we can do a comparison of of those numbers for you, so I have an idea how many are back now compared to what we were dealing with prior to, say, January. Other questions for Mr. Regina? I've seen any other questions. Thank you, Mr. Regina, for that report.
You're welcome.
Next on the, on the agenda this evening is the bear with me one second, is the status of the K six April twelve return. Dr. Walsh?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Zerby. Good evening, everyone. Just a quick update on the K to six return on on premises. The family survey opened up last week on March eleventh and closed yesterday at noon, March sixteenth. For those K to six, March fifteenth, for those K to six families that were interested to return on premises or remain virtual for the remainder of the school year. And just as an update reminders were sent through school messenger, through the district social media, principals included in their newsletter to make sure that we hit the pavement pretty hard, to make sure that those parents that received that survey would respond in a timely manner. So as of today, there are a hundred and nine K to six sections that we did allow for any family desiring to return to in-person, keeping in mind our capacity and spacing guidelines. This final phase for K to six will begin on Monday, April twelfth, two thousand and twenty one. So it's after the the full week after the spring break. And just as a quick update, as of four twelve, as of April twelfth, we'll have twenty eight ninety-two students total K to twelve, which is sixty-three percent of our students that will be on premises, and then the other remaining thirty-seven percent will remain virtual K to twelve. So specific date breakdowns do occur at the various levels, but overall, we have almost two thirds returning back to on premises and one third remaining virtual. And again, K to six will start April twelfth. Our seven to twelve began already in the month of March. And that's the update as of today, March sixteenth.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Are there questions for members of the board? Ms. Aubrey Larsonis?
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. At what point will we know whether or not we need to do any reconfigurations in any classes? I know that we talked about, I, I can't remember at what point, but we talked about the possible need to make changes if we are going to be exceeding certain numbers in certain classrooms. Do we know that yet, or are we still working through the data?
So we, there was really only one school, the Arrowhead, working with the building principal. We were able to reconfigure some of the furniture in the room to accommodate those certain situations that needed some some fine tuning. There were some familial and also some sibling adjustments that allowed us to to work within those guidelines. So as of now, all hundred and nine classes are able to accommodate the close of the the noon deadline yesterday, all students who wish to return to in-person.
And still maintaining that six by five distancing?
In certain situations, it, there, if you recall from Health and Safety Plan, there were certain situations that could require a five by five, but the majority of them were six by five. That is correct.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Dr. Walsh? Ms. Purdue?
Yes, just wanted, the total percentage that we are seeing returning back to the K to six?
Yes, K, at the K to six level, we have, right now, we had six, one thousand six hundred ninety-four in-person and six hundred remaining virtual. So that came out to a roughly about seventy-six percent about three quarters, one quarter, and it does vary from school to school. And it actually, the breakdown varies even from level to level, kindergarten through sixth grade.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Reese?
This isn't exactly a question for this, but, and I'm not asking for numbers, but do you have some idea of of the use or popularity of the after-school program to help students? And it's not for this presentation, so if you don't, don't worry.
Yeah, I can get that information. It began last week. It's, it's getting great responses, and it does vary again, school to school.
Okay, just maybe, maybe just a brief little snippet at, at, you know.
Ed Committee.
Not a presentation, just, just, and you're right, it's been only a week.
Any other questions for Dr. Walsh? So with his, with his summary, you know, we have closed that window for the return to in-person for grades K through six. And the data, we we shared, I believe, some of the, or the data with with members of the board, where that sits. We're comfortable moving forward, and we're, we appreciate everyone's cooperation in the matter, and we'll be starting back with, I think it's about an additional two hundred and nineteen students, Dr. Walsh, on on April twelfth. So this, this last round, you know, garnered about two hundred and nineteen students compared to the the original return in February, on February eighth. Ms. Reese?
I'm sorry, your, your last comment brought up another question for me. I one hundred percent understand the need to cut it off, but I was wondering if there's a case where the school thinks a child should be back, should be back, and the family's open to it, like, there isn't a medical concern, would we open that up, or have we done that? And you may not know that, being the superintendent, but that makes me a tiny bit nervous. Like, I'll be honest, as a teacher, there's a couple kids I have suggested to the guidance counselor or principal that they discuss with the family a return if that works for the family. So that.
Yeah, yeah, Ms. Reese, I think it's important to know that, in general, you know, the the cutoff is in place, and then there are circumstances, for example, there may be a special needs matter, or there may be other academic or or social emotional matters that we as a school need to address, and a lot of those are, you know, required under law for us to, you know, comply with in terms of placement. So, you know, we certainly will continue to comply with with those, those matters. Any other questions for Dr. Walsh? Thank you, Dr. Walsh. And last on on the guest and scheduled speakers this evening, we have Mr. Bicker with the budget update. Mr. Bicker, just let me know when you want me to turn the slide.
Okay, we can get past the title page. Turn the slide, please. All right, this update is from the changes that were made last month and incorporated into the March update. The revenue changes include the assessments, which increased by four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars roughly. That's allowed us to change the millage down by two point, point two, three, two percent to two point seven, six, eight percent of the millage increase. Interest income was updated to reflect our current balances. As we do with each month, staffing is updated, which will change the Social Security and Peasars income. And the transportation subsidy was updated to reflect the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one actual amount. And then we added in a reach grant for a hundred thousand dollars. Next slide. Okay, so this chart shows the historical millage rates over the last four years. Seventeen eighteen, we are at twenty-nine point four, five, eight, five mills. We're now at thirty point eight, five, three, four, which is one point three, nine, four, nine, or four point seven, four percent increase over the, it's actually three years, the four-year time period. That ranks us as the fourth lowest in the IU area. Next slide. So what is the impact to the homeowners? You'll see that on the average assessed home, the increase is a hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. As you can see from the chart below, the increase on a fifty thousand dollar assessment is forty-two dollars and seventy cents, which will go up to the million dollar assessment of eight hundred and fifty-four dollars of an increase. Total millage, a total taxes on a million dollar property assessment would be thirty-one thousand, seven hundred, seven dollars and four cents. Next slide. The next thing we have is the expenditure changes. So as we, as I said earlier, with every month, we update the staffing and change the salaries, Social Security, Peasars, and therefore are also impacted, as well as the healthcare. We also had healthcare second look come in, and the rates went up significantly. You'll see on the chart on the bottom, the healthcare for the medical went from open choice one, increased by thirteen point eight, five percent. Open choice two, roughly fifteen percent. Open choice three, it's actually POS, I'm sorry, POS, fourteen point four, four percent, and open choice three, not four, up ten percent. Our RX on the current plan is at twenty-one point one, five percent. The new plan that was agreed to under the MBE contract would actually have a zero percent increase, and we're also able to keep dental and vision at a zero percent increase. In addition to that, we updated the North Monco budget, which will have, incorporates us paying off the lease. This is scheduled to happen prior to year end. We also have changes that are reflected in the charter school. We reduced the committed, due to reduce of the committed funds. We had the final technology lease and debt services updated to reflect the payoff of the. We had the final technology lease and debt services updated to reflect the payoff of the ESCO lease. Next slide. So this puts us at a fifteen, one hundred and fifteen point four million dollar budget. Again, the millage increase is two point seven, six, eight percent. We do now have a balanced budget where last month, when we presented this, we were actually short by about seven, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Next slide. The year-to-year comparison you can show in this was added, and we have the increases that go from the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget to the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. And you can see the one that we're currently in, which is a twenty twenty-one budget. The change between the twenty twenty-one to the twenty-one, twenty-two budget is about two point one million dollars and then two point one, five million dollars in benefits. Operating expenses, we've been relatively flat at a hundred and sixty-six, almost a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And as I mentioned, debt service is actually down by almost eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The net change is three point six million dollar increase. One of the reasons for the large increase in the salaries and the benefits is the, obviously, the benefits go back to the changes in the healthcare, but also last year, we, or current year, I guess I should say, we did not budget for any M E A increase. The recent settlement will require a retro pay, so we're actually counting this year's increase and next year's increase in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. So that kind of accounts for why that increase is so much higher on the salary piece. Next slide. Key timeline items that are coming up, March assessments and millage will be done in April as well every month as we get to the end. But the other items are the third look for medical will come in and RX, we have workman's comp. In May, we'll have the property E and O. And then each of the months, we'll have the salary and benefits as staffing changes, position changes, or anything else that occurs in staffing. We bring those over each month, just as we do the assessments and the millage. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bicker. Are there questions from members of the board? Ms. Cancril?
I, I actually just thought of it now, and I didn't think of it, the finance committee. The transportation grant that we had just voted on when we talked about the different three options that we were looking at, is that something that we put in the budget or anything, or is that something that I just missed? Is, where would, where would we put that?
It, it's not a grant, it's the transportation subsidy. So what we did is we updated the subsidy, so by agreeing to pay that, and when it's all said and done, and we sign our documents, first student signs their documents, we turn it into P D E, we're supposed to get, they're still going to use the same information that they have now for the miles with, miles without, and all that stuff to calculate the subsidy. So what we did is we updated this transportation subsidy to reflect the current one, which was just provided to us by P D E. So we're counting that as level, we're expecting that to be about the same.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Bicker on the budget, Mr. Navrat?
Just a quick one, Tim, you said at the end there about the, the M E A contract. The increase, the back pay that's owed them for this year is going to be paid out of this year's fiscal year, correct? Not out of next year's budget?
It'll be paid out of this year's, but it's, since it's not in this year's, you got to count for it in next year's plus the next year. So yes, we'll pay it this year, but the increase that they get this year will also have to be factored in the next year's.
I got you. Okay, thank you. I understand what you were saying now. Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Bicker? Seeing no other questions on, on the budget, Mr. Bicker, thank you so much for, for that update. Again, we'll, we'll be working with the finance committee over the next several months towards an adoption in, in June. So I just want to bring the, the agenda back up. So on the agenda for next week, we have the award of excellence, and Dr. Yuki will be with us along with Representative Webster and Dr. Engstad will be talking about the reach program and the grant funding that was made available. And then lastly, on the guests and scheduled speakers, I'll be giving an update as we look ahead for the next few years in, in the efforts of moving Methacton forward. There will be reports as listed. I just want to bring to your attention that we have added to the report listing of a diversity, equity, inclusion report. Ms. Purdue and Ms. Drummond will, will, will do a, a tag team for that particular report on a monthly basis. We'll have, you know, other matters, and then we'll have the fiscal items. So, Mr. Bicker, let's, let's review the fiscal items, please.
Okay, so for this month, we'll have the list of bills, treasurer's report, and budgetary transfers. There's also a change order that we're going to be submitting for approval from Quinn Construction. This is their second change order. It is a credit change order in an amount of fourteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Yes, it is a credit change order. It's, it's a reduction in the cost. That's a material reduction, so they use less materials than anticipated, so we get a credit on that. And then finally, we'll have the appointment of the management trustee, which would be myself if the so board approves that.
Thank you, Mr. Bicker. Other questions, Mr. McGess?
Tim, at finance, we had talked about getting the kind of, I think it was requested by some member of the public with the forensic accounting look at all of our legal and how that spelled out. Will that be ready by next week?
Subjected to approval, yes.
Okay, will you be able to present it?
Well, I think, yeah, I think, well, I think our understanding was we were going to bring that back to the finance committee in, in April. Is that not what, and then, and then if we needed to move it forward to the rest of the board, we could certainly do that. That was, that's the impression I, that I had. If, if not, we can try to speed it up, but I don't, I don't know where we're at with that right now.
No, that, that's fine. I, I, maybe I presumed and I shouldn't have, so we will definitely have it for next month's finance then.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Other questions on the finance matters, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, just for the, the community's sake, the appointment of Mr. Bicker on this Buxmont Consortium, there's also a representative from the unions. I imagine that has changed as well. Tim, can you reference through that and, and how the Buxmont Consortium works with two votes in each school district?
Sure, so the consortium is comprised of, I think, I'm going to say twelve, but it's probably going to be thirteen or eleven school districts that are in it. Each unit gets a management representative and a labor representative. The school board would select the management representative and the unions would then get together and select the labor representative, so that, that they would be representing all of them. Each of us have an equal vote, one vote. We work together to provide changes to any plans, recommendations, anything that we feel that could benefit the members as well as help control costs. It's an effective way for the labor and management to work together to make changes in the healthcare without having to bring every little item back for a vote.
Thank you. It's a good overview.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Other questions on fiscal items, Mr. Navrat?
More a note than a question. The, the change order there from Quinn is associated with the the C M U portion of the facade repairs for Eagleville. That's the right side of the building. If you're looking at it from the street, that's what we did this summer. Can we just, so for people that are looking at this, can we amend that motion in some way, just to indicate that it's associated with that part, with that project?
We can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions for other matters of finance listed? Seeing no others, next on the agenda is personnel matters, Dr. Zardini.
Good evening, everyone. For your consideration this month, we have the following items. Two resignations professional, one of which is for retirement. Two resignations classified, both of which are for retirement. One employment professional recommending the new principal of Skyview Upper Elementary School. One long-term substitute classified. One change of status classified. Four uncompensated leaves professional. Three sabbatical leaves, two of which are for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, the other for the remainder of the current school year. A list of supplemental contracts, and then also one volunteer.
Other questions for Dr. Zardini, Ms. Reese?
I have two. One is, and I brought this up last month, sorry to be repetitive, but we lost to, to retirement, a veteran French teacher and now a veteran Spanish teacher. So I just, you know, not that that's a concern, but I know that they can be difficult to fill. So if you could keep us updated on that, that would be wonderful. And can you just briefly, and I know Dr. Zerby mentioned you would do this, briefly go through the principal hire process, just since it's such a major position, please?
Certainly, Ms. Reese, I can absolutely do that. We followed a rigorous process at, at every stage. In addition to the initial application screening process, there were four rounds of interviews. Each of those rounds included multiple constituents, including or consisting of central administrative representatives, building administrator representatives, Skyview staff members, Skyview parents, and also members of the Board of School Directors. There were a series of criteria that we included in the process, including professional experience, a series of question and answer, and also task-oriented components, all of which led us to the candidate that we're recommending this evening, Ms. Nicole Bericle, who has been an educator for thirteen years, serving most recently in the North Penn School District as a teacher, a team leader, a school climate coordinator, and an acting building administrator.
Um, and I know that I would assume that's to be determined based on, I don't know if admin works differently than teachers, if her district holds her to her sixty days. But would it be sixty days at most, or do we kind of let it go out of respect? Like, how does that work?
That's generally determined by the district from which the individual is joining us, so anticipating that Ms. Bericle and I, you know, I, I can't speak for her, but assuming that she would advance through the process and be confirmed by the Board of School Directors next Tuesday, that clock would likely begin the day thereafter, and we would, we would wait for her for up to sixty days, depending upon her current employer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Other questions on matters of personnel for Dr. Zardini? Ms. Aubrey Larsonis?
Uh, yeah, for the sabbatical leaves that we have for professional development. Remind me on the process for that, do they get their professional development program approved internally before the, their approval comes to the board?
Absolutely, Ms. Aubrey Larsonis. That has to be submitted to my office, that is reviewed by my office, and then we go through a process where we look at the, the rigor of those courses and then work with the employee to determine the efficacy of the program and then either approve or deny it. And if we do deny it, we will work with the employee as they look to, to meet our standards for a professional development sabbatical.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Zardini.
Thank you.
Any other, Mr. Winters?
So a follow-up on that more for Tim in this case. So from a budgeting perspective, we do, we have four-year sabbaticals that we're approving. That would be you substituted, I assume, with a long-term sub. From a budgetary perspective, do we, how do we handle that? Do we acknowledge these as we see these in the budgeting process? Or do we hold the spot as, as expected when they are going to return after the year with the full salary associated with those individuals?
We would budget for the individual that is going on sabbatical. And we would then move that to the sub-cost associated with replacing that individual. Currently, I think if you recall, we had a sub-budget of close to one point seven million dollars. We subsequently have reduced that down by roughly nine hundred thousand dollars. So that our sub-cost now, as people are going out and we are required to get subs, we're going to be using the salary expenses associated with those individuals and their benefits to cover those sub-cost. So that way, we don't double count, and we're not over accounting people that may, or come in or leave.
Okay. Just to add to, this is a, they're, they're at the fifty percent rate when they go on sabbatical, so they're only fifty percent of their salary when they go on the sabbatical.
Right. But there is a savings there, and we're accounting for it in a, in a lump sum anticipation of what the expenses are going to be related to substitute expense. So I, I guess I'm just questioning, in this case, we can be a little more exact in the process for the, for the year. But I understand the principle that that would be an increase coming back the following year. So, you know, it's just something, I mean, this is, it, it, when we talk about the changes that we see in, in the organization, especially through now, through, I would say, May, there is an awareness that some of these things are going to provide savings. So I don't know what, if anybody else, Drew, or Jen, or Ralph, or anybody else wanted to pipe in here.
Yeah, I think, I think, Mr. Winters, what, what Mr. Bicker is suggesting is that it's actually not going to provide savings in its net result. He's saying that he's paying for the substitute out of the offset of the, the salary associated with it, and, and the employee still gets full benefits, and so we account for that. Now, Mr. Bicker, is that, is that what you're saying, or, or are you saying something different than that?
No, that's correct. So we would budget for that, the full individual. We've already reduced the substitute cost to account for that person. So that, that salary and benefits are going to move over as we use the substitutes.
Perhaps like in our next finance meeting, we could have an example, because I, the substitutes aren't the same exact cost, so.
It actually would cost us more.
It would cost you more for this.
It becomes a net expense.
Yeah, which is understandable then. So if we could just have like an example per se of those three with the replacement.
Absolutely, absolutely. Mr. Bicker, make sure that we, we put an example together, maybe two or three examples of how that would look and work. Okay, all right. Other questions for, for members of the board on, on matters of personnel? Not seeing any other questions. Next on the agenda. Curriculum programs, Dr. Walsh?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Good evening. For your review and consideration, the following textbook and supporting resources were shared at the March second Ed Committee meeting. These texts for this program and resource adoption will be available for public review until the official adoption date of the next action meeting, which will be April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. These textbooks and resources will be available in the curriculum office for public review, again, after next week's action meeting. And you can see the resources that are listed there and the targeted grade levels, and whether they're replacement or no. And again, so those eight textbooks with the accompanying curriculum and resources.
Are there any questions for Dr. Walsh on any of these resources? Again, you will not be approving these tonight or next week. And, and it won't be until the April voting meeting that you'll, you know, vote on these. So you certainly have time to make any further comments or questions, if you should have them.
And like you said, Dr. Walsh, and I know I asked this at education, and you did say it, that although it's COVID, they are in the curriculum office for those who'd like to see them, right?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Navrat, you had your hand up?
Oh, I got my answer. I read. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Walsh on these resources? Seeing no other questions, we'll go on to policy, Mr. Regina.
For this evening, we have a number of items for first read. And we will have one addition to that item also, policy three thirty-one will also be added to the policy for next week. A number of items for second read that we saw last month and first read. And if there's any questions on any of the following items, we can take those now.
Any questions for members of the board, Ms. Aubrey Larsonis?
Not a question, just wanted to clear some, or call something out. We had talked about this in the policy committee meeting, but policy two thirty-two had some minor edits, like grammatical, really minor edits from first read to second read. So just wanted to make sure that the board was aware. That's part of the normal process that things can get changed from first read to second read, so just wanted to call that out.
Thank you, Ms. Aubrey Larsonis.
Any other questions on matters of policy? Seeing no other hands raised, under other, we have gifts and donations. A gift from Stephanie Robinson, four, forty dollars for Eagleville Dress Down Day. A gift uh, from Stephanie Robinson, uh, for forty dollars for Eagleville Dress Down Day. Uh, and a donation to approve the backpack program donations as as listed uh, in a total amount of one thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and four cents. And I just want to commend all the people working on that, uh, specifically Ms. Drummond, uh, with with her work on that. Uh, the next we have uh, the the school calendar. Uh, Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Walsh, would you please just inform the board what this change is?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Zerby. Uh, as was discussed at the Ed Committee meeting on March second, uh, we are changing the, we are recommending a proposal change on April twenty third, which was scheduled as a nine to twelve in-service day, as that was the location of the high schools, uh, post prompt. But since there is no post prompt on that date, we're turning that into a student day to recapture those hours in that date. Um, in addition, on the calendar, you'll notice highlighted as we perceive of planning as of today for our PSSA in Keystone's, um, that will occur starting on May eleventh and running through May twenty seventh, and that is indicated on the um, calendar for your approval and consideration next week.
Questions for Dr. Walsh, Ms. Reese?
Um, forgive me, Dr. Walsh, I know we were going back and forth. Did we change the last day of school?
The last day, no, it's still uh, June fifteenth.
Okay, that's what I thought. I apologize. That's one bad thing about working in a different district and uh, my head spins with dates. Um, in March, we typically um, approve a graduation date.
That's that's correct. So uh, uh, the interim principal, Dr. Gravenese, and I have been having discussions. Unfortunately, we are working on a number of um, opportunities uh, to allow for the most attendance possible by families uh, in an outdoor venue. And it it's it's rather, it it takes a little time. So um, we are, we are not, uh, not all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. And as soon as I can get that, and it could be as late as late as Friday this week, it may be before you um, you know, come Tuesday. Uh, but but I I can't guarantee that right now, and I don't want to share a date out until I'm certain of venue and and the date associated with it. But 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 you're absolutely right. I I want to make sure that we get this out as soon as possible. But I can't release a date unless I'm a hundred percent sure because I can't then make an adjustment.
Understood, understood completely. I just wanted.
Yeah, that's a good question. Yep, good question. Uh, any other questions for Dr. Walsh on the change of this year's schedule? This is not next year's schedule. You approved that last month. Uh, this is this year's schedule. Anything else on that, uh, Mr. Navrat?
Yeah, just a quick question, since you brought up PSSAs. I know there was some, I mean, we got a disappointing ruling from the uh, US Department of Education saying that these tests have to go forward. And I know Pennsylvania gave us some uh, some flexibility. Can you just talk about what went into the decision to have PSSAs now versus in the fall? Like, I know, you know, then you'd have the same kids taking it, you know, twice in one year type of thing. But can you just, can you talk about that? Because I know that's going to be a concern for a lot of parents.
Sure, the uh, the Mr. Navrat, the the window opened up um, for the PSSA and Keystone testing. They gave us some windows running. PSSA will, they allow you to run through the end of May or in September. Um, in consultation with several curriculum directors across the county, there was general consensus that September was the least palatable um, for students and also looking just here at Methacton, what we thought was the best interest. So in coordination with the elementary principals and secondary principals, um, we agreed that the May timeline was best for our students, best for our teachers, and just best overall. So uh, those dates are highlighted in the calendar, starting with May eleventh through May twenty seventh for the ELA math and the science for grades four and eight, as well as the Keystone window, which starts May seventeenth through May twenty seventh.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Navrat. Uh, any other questions on the matter of the calendar for this school year? Seeing no other questions, under uh, the solicitor proposal, uh, it is recommended that uh, the approval of the appointment of Whistler Perlstein as district solicitor in accordance with the terms of the attached memorandum. In addition, uh, we have uh, a recommendation for a special counsel appointment to appoint Sweet Stevens, Katzen Williams as special counsel for special education matters and right to know uh, matters and other matters that are determined by the superintendent in accordance with the attachment. Are there any questions on uh, either of these two recommendations? Uh, Ms. Aubrey Larsonis?
Not a question, but just a clarification um, that the the reason that this is appearing on the agenda and the reason that it it doesn't seem to be spurring a lot of debate or discussion among the board is um, our longtime solicitor Kyle Summers is moving uh, firms from Sweet Stevens, Katz and Williams to Whistler Perlstein. Um, and given the longstanding relationship that we have with Mr. Summers, um, and the amount of time he's worked with us, um, that's the reason that this recommendation is on here for us to to move firms.
Thank you for that clarification, uh, Ms. Reese.
Just one or two minor questions. One is, I guess there's no blip, meaning no gap. He just, some, like, he might be sitting with us on two, next Tuesday as a member of Sweet Stevens, and then the next month he's um, uh, an attorney with Whistler Perlstein. It doesn't really matter is, or it doesn't, doesn't.
There won't be an interruption.
Okay, I, that's what I meant. It's okay, that I I said gap, interruption's a better word.
No, we we worked it all out with with Mr. Summers, um, and he worked it out with with the firm. So there will not be an interruption in his services for us.
Okay, so then when he can't come to our um, meetings, um, that we might have new, a new face that we might not be familiar with, who's a stand-in for him, which is not a problem. I'm just asking because.
Yeah, that 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 was, it would be a stand, unless it's a special education matter or a right to know matter, uh, there would be another member from Whistler Perlstein that would uh, be, I'll call it a stand-in for our our typical solicitor. That's correct. And that would create, you know, new relationships for us, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Other other questions, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, just make a a comment and and I I don't, I think this is actually works. So I I'd say five years ago, I would have said the right thing to do is just to have one solicitor servicing the district. But the reality is we're we're now on uh, four. So I I um, we we can use Chuck Kyle that I'm very comfortable and 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 uh, having him represent us, but also we could use Sweet Stevens who has especially and and special education. And certainly they've been involved in our right to know. We use Fox Rothschild for contract negotiations, et cetera. So I I believe having it split up, although you would think there'd be some economic impact for doing that, there really doesn't seem to be. And I think we're using the best resources in each each area. So, you know, I'm going to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Any other comments on any of these matters or questions? Seeing no no others, uh, I'll turn the meeting over to uh, the board president.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Um, at this point, then, I guess we will open it up to courtesy of the floor. I'm sorry, Ms. Reese, did you have something?
I'm sorry. I know I've been talking a lot tonight, but I had a couple of questions and and it and it's seven fifty-nine. Drew, I promise I'll be quick. One quick thing is, um, I I went through my notes from our last meeting, and I think we answered everybody's concerns and questions, but there was one comment or question that came up about our agenda, I, our um, not agendas, the reports. And I'm not sure if the person was referring to North Monaco and MCIU, but they mentioned, why aren't there reports or something? And I'm not sure if that's what they meant, but um, just an FYI, North Monaco and uh, MCIU, the reports are on the North Monaco website and the MCIU website because those are separate boards. So I just didn't know if that's what the person was talking about, but I wanted to respond to that. And then I just, I was going to mention something at the special meeting. But um, we just kind of had the year anniversary of um, the shutdown this week and the full-time return of all of our students. And I know as an educator, it was a, you know, a little bit of an exhausting week, and I just sincerely, especially since Mr. Sergini is now part of the cabinet, um, I just sincerely want to thank the cabinet members, the admin, the staff, this board. Um, you know, nothing was perfect and for any district or any school, any family, any individual during this pandemic, but I cannot thank everybody enough for their hard, hard work, all the extra hours. I mean, some of these people on this call were ma- were contact, making contact tracing phone calls before the Department of Health was making it. If people remember that we were one of the districts hit first. Um, so I just sincerely thank every single custodian, bus driver, teacher, parent, who went through this last year. Sorry, it's just, it's been ex- exhausting. And we should be proud of all the work that was done. So I didn't mean to get upset, sorry. It's just, I'm so grateful that many of our students are okay. And if they're struggling, they're getting the help that they need. And we've had so many successes and that that really matters. So thank all of you and please, please make sure to thank your staff.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Reese. Uh, thank you for sharing all that with us. Uh, I don't think anyone on this call could have said it better and said it with a as much passion and emotion as you did. So I I I gotta, I gotta say thank you to you, the board members and 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 all that you, uh, I'll I'll call it ditto to uh, everything and everything that you said. So so well done.
One of the benefits of Zoom is that no one will be able to see if my mascara is running now. Thank you, Henry. Um, and I also want to say that um, it's it's kind of perfect timing now that we know that um, all of our staff who who are interested, who want vaccination, will have it available to them this week. Um, knowing that 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 light is there, that by the time we get to spring break, that vaccine will have kicked in and and that our staff is protected, um, just really, it's a light at the end of the tunnel right now. Um, so thank you for everyone, um, and all of your work that you you've put in to get that process um, in place so that our staff can be protected. All right, Mr. Navrat?
I wish I would have gone first because I don't want to follow all that. Stop, you're gonna be crying. Um, question about um, spring sports. We're going to start on uh, Monday. PIA issued some new guidance uh, this week around mask wearing in athletes. It looks like we're, you know, we're moving back towards, I guess, maybe not the completely unfettered, no masks on the field uh, that we had for the fall sports, but things like people that are in close proximity, right, umpires and catchers, batters, that kind of thing. Um, there's other, uh, the guidance included things like, uh, you know, sports where you've got to wear a mouth card, like lacrosse, right? That those players won't have to wear masks as well. Are we going to uh, get an update for the health and safety plan as of Tuesday to reflect those new changes? Do we need one?
Well, uh, the way we, Dr. Spewak and I have had conversations about that. And I I think that uh, the 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 challenge on on all those things that you just mentioned is that the league has some, you know, uh, determinations to make, uh, where whereby uh, that that meeting isn't till the afternoon of of two, of next Tuesday. So the, in in looking at, in looking at the matters, uh, the health and safety plan uh, does allow uh, some leeway for Dr. Spewak and I, if if there are some league or uh, uh, governor changes uh, in terms of of those requirements to be uh, to be responsive if necessary. So um, I don't have a specific answer for you other than I want to see what comes out of the league meeting because while the governor or or while the uh, the Health Department and the governor say it's one thing, uh, the league may be saying something different. I I I I know that, and you probably know that we've seen some of these changes uh, from the league. And and I got to understand what they're going to try to do. I don't know that at this point.
I I'll just, I'll echo what I said earlier through this is that I don't believe that the league should be speaking for our conferences. Uh, excuse me, the league should not be speaking for our districts and our students. Uh, I think the guidance is clear. The data is clear. When we look at on-field transmission, um, there has been none, right? I'll say, shouldn't say none, almost none, right? We haven't seen the data that shows that it's it's a, it's a, it's a reliable transmission vector. We've we've followed this through sports, through youth sports, through school sports that we're, well, that the transmission that we're seeing on teams is all related to, you know, people carpooling and and unmasked activities. So I I know the league is us essentially, right? I mean, the league is a collection of schools, and I think it's important that the schools represent the wishes of their constituents and their boards when they go to these meetings. And I would, I I'm sure uh, if uh, if Dr. Spewak and Dr. Gravenese are our representatives to the PAC, I would hope that they are carrying that message loud and clear, that I think PIA double A's guidance is sound. Um, and that should be the rule of the land.
Mr. Navrat, I I I certainly appreciate what you shared there. It it's always, it's always easier for me to, you know, I know what these rules are. I know what the league wants to say. If they're, if they're congruent and they allow us to make an easy decision and communication, then it becomes easy. But but if there's, you know, depending on 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 a lot of things, it may not be that simple. And and I I don't want to tell the board or our athletes or our coaches one thing and then create a problem uh, for us. So I, you know, the the problem here is, in my opinion, is the timing. Um, I I I might not know something until uh, the afternoon of of Tuesday of the board meeting. If I think there's something critical that requires board action, I will certainly uh, ask uh, the board president if we can bring it up as a matter of presentation and action uh, before the board, if it is appropriate.
Yeah, just to be clear, my question is not so much about the process because timing dictates everything, right? It's about what we're going to represent to the PAC, to the conference in terms of how we push and and how we use our own leverage um, to to help, help the rest of the league make the right decision on this matter.
Understood. Any other questions, uh, Ms. Hall?
Uh, on a similar note, I just want to, I think I already know the answer to this, but I want to confirm that our spring sports are a PAC only schedule and that we won't be traveling across county borders and having to deal with other county health issues.
I I don't, I don't know that answer.
Okay, I I I briefly looked. I think it's PAC only, but um, I just wanted to ask that question. Also, I had some positive feedback in my house from the start of the high school today or yes, today and yesterday. So I just wanted to pass that on. Everything sounds like it's going well and we have happy students. So thank you to everyone that put in the work.
Ms. Aubrey Larsonis, I think I turned the meeting over to you. I accidentally called on someone. I apologize.
It's okay, that's okay. I just was pausing to see if anybody else had anything to say anymore, tearful speeches. I muted myself.
I'm telling you that hour loss of sleep just really, so I apologize for getting emotional. It's just, it's been a long year and I am really proud of our staff and I swear I need that hour back.
It was absolutely well said. It it was, I think, what was on a lot of our minds. So thank you. Um, with that, I will go to courtesy of the floor. So um, as a reminder, we required people to pre-register if they wanted to speak this evening. Um, please keep your comments to four minutes or less, introduce yourself with your name and municipality. Um, if you've registered to speak, please raise your hand and I can begin to call on people. Okay, well, then it looks like we don't, oh, I'm sorry, we have one. Mr. Earnshaw, you are in whenever you are ready.
Uh, thank you. Brian Earnshaw, Lower Providence. Uh, first got a couple of questions on the list of bills. Uh, there are two payments to Lower Providence Township that look like they're related to the Arrowhead Construction. Um, check numbers one nine nine four five seven and one nine nine four two one. Uh, my question there is first, what are they? Description's kind of vague. And two, why are they charged in general fund as opposed to the bond or a capital fund? Also, check number one nine nine four oh two to Telatin for appraisal fees. I'm wondering what those are related to, if that's related to reverse tax appeals or the Shenandoah litigation matter. Uh, secondly, regarding the solicitor, um, in my experience, I I've found that if you are able to consolidate matters in one firm, you do get some savings. So I would ask for the board and the administration, we look at that. And the only way to figure that out probably would to get um, to go out for bid for legal services. Uh, regarding the MEA contracts, I was wondering if that had been signed yet. Um, I note that the fact finders report was approved at the February third meeting of the board. We're now a month and a half beyond that. And um, my understanding is that that contract's not available to the public until it is signed. Um, if it hasn't been signed, I'm wondering what what's causing the delay and when is the expectation of when? Um, if it hasn't been signed, I'm wondering what, what's causing the delay and when is the expectation of when it will be signed? Um, at last month's board meeting, I asked about the status of the Audubon building, the Audubon Elementary Building. And there was a comment that that might be on the agenda for this month, but it looks like it is not, so I'm wondering what the plan is there. Um, and the last topic to discuss would be the budget presentation. I'm, I'm wondering why there's not been any update of the forecast for the current fiscal year. Um, the forecast back in January presented showed a five and a half million dollar surplus. And there's been no update since, uh, at either a finance committee or a board meeting, and really no one from the committee or the board has asked for it. Um, tied into that, what are the thoughts on the projected use or the use of the projected surplus of five and a half million? Uh, will that money be returned to taxpayers or retained for additional spending? Regarding the budget presentation on the revenue changes, I'm starting to read that some municipalities are finding out how much funding they expect from the 1.9 trillion dollar bill that was just passed, and I'm wondering if any of that money that's going to trickle down to the school districts will be factored into Methacton's budget. Uh, regarding slide number seven in Mr. Bricker's presentation. Uh, a couple of the column, it looks like he's comparing actual for 2019 to 20 to a budget for 2019 and 2020. Um, so I'm, I'm really confused as far as what's being compared here. And I'm wondering again why there's no comparison to the forecast for the current year. Uh, Mr. Bricker's comments saying that the two years of MEA contracts increases are included in one column shows that this is an invalid comparison, you need to compare the forecast uh, to the next year's budget and also look at actual spending in prior years, comparing budget to budget is useless unless you're right on budget, and as we know, the district has posted nearly 15 million dollar surpluses over the past five years. Um, I'm concerned that there were really no questions tonight about the budget. Um, it seems that the board is comfortable with a 2.8% tax increase, I know it's not final, I know there's certain things to change. But nobody has questioned the details of the budget. If the budget is truly zero-based, there should be details that Mr. Bricker can provide to you. So you can understand what's going on with staffing, what's going on with legal fees, consulting. Every line in the budget should be able to be reviewed. Uh, and there's been no discussion about the excess staff at the high school and when that issue will be addressed in the budget. So I, I guess, I'm, I'm concerned that we're nearing the finish line here on the budget and nobody's really get diving into details and hasn't throughout this whole process. Um, so if that's not going to happen, you might want to advise taxpayers to plan and budget, uh, for a 2.8% tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Mr. Andrews, whenever you're ready.
John Andrews, Lower Providence. My impression is that, uh, Mr. Earnshaw just asked a a fantastic list of excellent and timely questions, so I hope they get considered. Uh, he made, he, he queried as to the, uh, the 1.9 bill trillion dollar stimulus as to how much of that would settle, would, uh, would come to Methacton and that figure as well as figures for all the other uh, local school districts were reported in the Sunday Inquirer. I think for, for Methacton, something on the order of $175,000. Where the, uh, be, where there can be more students on premises, starting on April 12th. I, I would, I would like to see that moved up a week, uh. Now, by then, uh, most of the staff will have been vaccinated uh, at least two weeks prior and, uh, now where I don't hear details on whether the students are on schedule relative to learning in this difficult school year. You know, getting kids back in school accelerates their learning. And, and that, that's a positive all around, so, uh, you know, maybe some consideration could be given to starting, uh, uh, on April 5th rather than April 12th. And, uh, you know, I guess there's some, uh, Easter holiday, uh, days off around that era, but, uh, again, I'd like to see the school start earlier rather than later, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Okay, Lauren Nalgin.
Hi, Lauren Nalgin-Morsester, I just wanted to, uh, bring up again, I brought it up in one of the prior meetings, um, just to put it in front of everyone again, requesting some more, um, I guess, insight into the ICANN statement report cards, um, my fourth grader and second grader. It's hard as a parent to have a lot of insight when they were actual virtual, when they were virtual. Believe it or not, I had more insight because I could hear and see what they were doing. Um, but I really don't have a lot of, uh, insight into how they're performing on their assessments. Um, I did ask my daughter's teacher for tests and it took a lot of back and forth to just obtain the most recent math and, uh, reading test. And that's the first one I've received all year, so I feel like parents are really, again, I know it's a weird year and we've switched to this new report card. Um, we have Power School available to us for our older children. Um, so I just, I really wish there was more insight as to how the kids were performing regularly so that we could help them, um, because I know the teachers are busy, again, it's a weird year, but I would like to see all of the math tests, so if they have something wrong, I can work with them and correct it so they know. Um, versus just saying they're doing, you know, they're performing on level, um, that doesn't mean a lot to me and, um, you know, I, I would in talking to other parents, we just feel like, you know, I don't get to see their writing samples, just really don't have any insight unless we really, really, really ask the teachers, um, and I, I can't speak for everyone, of course, maybe there's some that are more communicative. Um, but I just think overall the ICANN statements are really limiting as to you know, what we are exposed to as parents regarding their performance on a regular basis, so I would just ask that to be considered. Um, you know, especially as, you know, we're already in March and, um, you know, some of us really are not sure how our kids are doing, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nalgin. Okay, um, I don't see anyone else with a hand up, so, um, I'm going to close the courtesy of the floor. Um, at this point, if anyone has any of the board members have any comments before we, yeah, Mr. Navarrett?
Yeah, just a quick comment on a couple of the, uh, Mr. Earnshaw asked about, um, I believe the Talatin, uh, invoice was related to Shenondale. Audubon, uh, we've restarted discussions with the township, I assume, I presume we'll have, uh, some more updates as we go forward in the coming months, but nothing to comment on now. The, uh, I think the comparisons, actuals, the budget, um, are, are, are a challenge, certainly when we're looking at the last, uh, two school years relative to COVID, and I don't think they provide a very good comparison year on year as to, uh, uh, what our budgeted spending looks like in a normal year versus what we project to be a normal year next year, so I think that that's part of the reason why we're looking budget to budget. Um, and then regarding the forecast, uh, I believe we're expected to have an update next month, is that right, Mr. Bricker?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Navarrett, Ms. Drummond?
And just, um, for the public's information, could we just summarize, um, the MEA contract and, um, that process about consolidating all the information to get a signature?
Yeah, um, I, I believe that we have all of the comments or of the, the contract has been consolidated, we've worked with, um, our solicitor at Fox Rothschild to do that. Um, we have a document that is in a good place. Um, and it is now, I believe, with the negotiating team for review and it will be hopefully available for signature in the next couple of weeks, um, assuming that there are no changes that need to happen. Um, but a, as I said, the, um, MEA and, um, our staff have gotten the document together, so it is moving forward. Um, and like I said, should be completed soon. Anyone have anything else?
Oh, oh, sorry about that, here you go, Mr. Winters. Fighting for the mic, fighting for the mic.
No, just to follow up on the same subject, though, I, I think it's very, I think the community should understand when both sides agree to a fact-finding agreement, you have a contract. It is, we're talking about a T-crossing and I-dotting. It's not that there's additional items still being negotiated through this process. It's the language specifics on, in, in that, that is, you would think that would take, it could be quicker. But that is the process that we go through, so it's, if there's any belief that there is some hidden understanding that there is not an agreement with the union, that is not, that is not correct. Uh, Ralph answered a couple of the questions on the Talatin. We are getting close to, uh, I believe we have a court date, uh, in the very short term with Shenondale, I know that's been a question in the past. And certainly the elements related to any money that may be coming from the federal is not been something that has uh, I imagine been even thought about that closely, even though it is 100, potentially $175,000, but certainly something we could look at. I believe, oh, I, I would say related to the performance issues, I'm certainly working with your teacher, which obviously the, the, the parent has and the principal, uh, is the first way to go and, um, you know, I think, uh, the review that Dr. Walsh gave us last month related to the performance and acknowledging that some of the performance of students is lagging in from previous years is something that we have talked about, uh, I think Mr. Andrews mentioned something like that, so it is something we're aware of and looking at it, and it's, unfortunately, across the entire country related to the delivery of education in the last, uh, one year and five days or whatever it is, so, sorry, Jen.
Now, my, my comment was only going to be, maybe, uh, Dr. Walsh, we could create a one, one pager because this is new, the ICANN statement for the, for people who are used to traditional grades that we could create a one pager just showing their status of their students and especially in this tying time, like maybe creating something with the teachers to allow that kind of communication.
Thank you.
Great, anyone else with any final comments? All right, Mr. McGinnis? Is that your motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I second, happy St. Patrick's Day, Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you, everyone, meeting adjourned, have a great night.